Here.
Board member Meyer.
Here.
Board member Sackett Gabel.
Here.
Board president Telesford.
Here.
Board member Vat Lamani.
Here.
Board member Whit Letter.
Here.
Quorum is present.
All right, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Please take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. That written notice was sent from the office of the Secretary of the Board at 10:01 a.m. on May 29, 2024. That said notice was sent via email to Maplewood and South Orange Township clerks and the editors of the news record Star Ledger, Tap into Somme, and The Village Green. All right, for tonight's special meeting, I'll just read my introduction here. Good evening, everyone. Tonight marks the culmination of a process that began on January 5, 2024. The Board embarked on one of its most important functions, selecting a superintendent. I would like to thank each Board member Callahan, Deval Wilson, Eckert, Gifford, Meyer, Sackett Gabel, Vat Lamani, and Whit Letter for their engagement throughout the process. I also extend my gratitude to our business administrator, Mr. Burnside, and our Assistant Business Administrator, Ms. Del Guercio, for their support and assistance. A special thanks to Board members Callahan and Eckert for serving alongside me as Superintendent Search Liaisons while our meetings and planning have finally come to fruition in tonight's meeting. For the Superintendent Search, we partnered with Hazard Young AIA and Associates, or HYA. Edward McCormick and Karen Shaw provided a robust process to guide us through the search. The process began with our engagement phase, during which we received input from over 2,000 individuals through three community forums, an online survey, and over 25 focus groups. HYA noted that they received more than twice the responses typical for a community of our size, demonstrating the high level of engagement and care from our community members. We integrated your voices and those of other key stakeholders into a comprehensive leadership profile, which served as a template for the job posting and recruitment efforts. The Board received over 40 applicants for this position, which would narrow down to a short list of candidates who interviewed with the Board over two weekends. After much discussion and deliberation, I'm happy to announce that the Board will appoint Jason Bing as Superintendent of the South Orange Maplewood School District. Mr. Bing brings extensive experience and impressive qualifications to the superintendent role, aligning well with the district's mission to provide students with the highest quality educational experience. His robust background in curriculum development and educational administration will significantly enhance the district's ongoing efforts to improve academic standards and outcomes. What impressed the Board most was Mr. Bing's profound understanding of various educational topics, including curriculum and instruction, special education, the budgetary process, and community engagement. His depth of knowledge and expertise will elevate the district's educational programs and initiatives. Additionally, Mr. Bing has demonstrated a dedication to equity, diversity, and inclusion, aligning well with the district and the Board's guiding principles. Furthermore, Mr. Bing's familial history and ties to South Orange Maplewood community further solidified our confidence in his abilities to lead the district with a genuine understanding of the community's needs and values. His local connection provides an added layer of insight and commitment. The Board is proud to welcome Mr. Bing and looks forward to the positive impact he will have on our students and the broader social school community. This evening, we will vote on approving Mr. Bing's appointment and passing a resolution for an early appointment to assist the district during this transitional period. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Bing to the South Orange Maplewood School District. We wish him well as he continues the progress we have seen over the years.
And?
You can come up, right?
And?
First, I want to thank the Board. I can say this to the public. The process was comprehensive, and every question, every comment these particular Board members have were community-based. You could tell right off the bat that these students and the families were a priority, so that was highly appreciated, and your investment in this community was quite obvious. It's one of the things that drew me to this position. So I want to thank you all for the process, and I'm honored and humbled as I take this position, and I look forward to working with the community. I know we're going to put out a schedule of town hall meetings in the very near future, so we're looking into a lot of face-to-face meetings and get to know everybody and move forward as we come into South Orange Maplewood School District. Again, I'm very excited. I want to thank you all, and I truly and wholeheartedly look forward to working with our community. Thank you.
All right, now we'll have our hearing of individuals and delegations. Thank you for coming in person and dialing in by phone this evening. The South Orange Maplewood Board of Education certainly respects that you've taken the time out of your busy day to address the Board at tonight's meeting. We value public involvement in our school district, and we are eager to hear what you have to say. The Board does have timelines by policy, and it will be enforcing those to enable as many people to speak as possible this evening. Each individual will be given three minutes to speak. Please do your best to stay within the time afforded to you. The first public comment period is usually limited to one hour, and the second public comment period may be limited to 30 minutes. All input shared with the Board and Board of Education is taken very seriously and will inform future deliberations and work by the Board of Education and its committees. Can I have Geneva McDaniel?
Sorry, I just want my kids to be able to sit next to me for a second. Okay, come here. Hi, thank you for your time. I will try to keep this to three minutes, but I am an attorney and very long-winded, so it might be a struggle. I brought my kids here, and I'm not sure if this is entirely the right forum. I've struggled a little bit to figure out, like, the right place to tell my story. Many of you may, I don't know, many of you may know me. I am Geneva McDaniel. I'm the mother of Quentin and Jagger Toussaint. Again, if you know me, you're probably sick of hearing from me, but I'm here, once again, just to tell my story and make sure that it is heard by, I guess, the right audience. I am a single mother whose children attend South Mountain Elementary. On 6/30 on April 12, we learned that my twins were placed at Maplewood Middle. I immediately filed a transfer request within minutes. I don't drive, and I'm a mother of little means. I have no way to get my kids to school in Maplewood. I purposefully chose a home that was two blocks from South Orange Elementary so that my kids could be close to me and close to school. It's okay, honey. It's okay. Something to understand about my children, which they have allowed me to share with you, is that they've been through a lot in the past three years. We've moved from New York during the pandemic. They were denied admittance to South Orange Elementary, and then they were sent to school in Maplewood, and then they were transferred back to South Mountain. This transfer will be the third in three years. During all of this, my son has had mental health issues and has actually threatened his own life. My daughter has been distraught. When we learned that they were placed in Maplewood Middle School, I explained all of this to the school system, and I also explained that the saving grace has been that my children have now built a community with the kids, all of whom are transferring to the school that is two blocks from our house, to, sorry, South Orange Middle School. I have been struggling to find the way to have somebody who can be an advocate for me or can understand why this is a difficult process. Listen, I understand integration. I understand some of the purpose that is behind a lot of this, but I am really trying to get behind how to make this work for my children. And when I have tried to call the Superintendent's Office, listen, the day that we learned of what was going on, I put in a transfer request within a minute because my son's best friend's mother is, like, is a teacher at Soms, and she was like, "Just put in a transfer request." We didn't get a response. Other parents got responses. They got transfer requests accepted. We didn't get a response. I don't understand what the process is. When I called the school board, when I called the Superintendent's Office and asked, "What are the factors that go into this? Like, you know, how does this work?" They told me they couldn't tell me because they outsourced. It's like some kind of, like, algorithm that's outsourced, and, like, the school board doesn't, like, actually take charge of it. Like, I'm here today because I want to advocate for my children, but also because I just want you to understand from, like, an actual human perspective that this is traumatic to families and difficult. Like, I understand integration, like I said, but my kids are being punished, and the explanation and the transparency and the communication is not there. So even if it doesn't work for my kids, which I really hope that it does, like, I think we're on a waiting list or something, but even if it doesn't work for us, I want you to understand this is really hard for families, and I don't want other families to have to go through what we are going through. This is ruining the end of their graduation, like, everything, and I'm just dealing with a lot, okay? Okay, okay. So I apologize for being overly emotional. Everybody has heard me be overly emotional, I'm sure, like, you know, but I just want to be a face and a person who is telling you that this is, really happens to families, and this is hard. So this is why I'm here, and this is why I brought my children, and I just want you to know, okay? Okay, all right, thank you. All right, do you want to go, somebody? Okay, okay, okay. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Move on to the action portion. We have no more people signed up? Okay. So move to the action portion. On the agenda, you have two motions, or two resolutions, 4623 and 4624 for approval. Do I have a motion to approve both? Yes, motion to move those forward? Second. Second. Discussions on the motions? So I'll just invite every Board member to speak on the process if they'd like to. So we'll just start down the line. If you wish to speak, say something. If not, it's okay. So Board member Callahan?
All right. All good evening, everyone. I want to thank everyone for being here tonight, tuning in from home, especially on a busy election day. This is an exciting night. We are in a period, as a district, of change and, at times, turmoil. We're adapting curriculum. We're making a lot of efforts to integrate schools and enhance our approaches, particularly around culturally responsive teaching, diversity, equity, inclusion. We have work on social, emotional learning. We're facing a budget shortfall, trying to maintain our commitment to aging buildings. But despite these challenges, I remain hopeful and excited and confident in our abilities to move forward. So before we move on to talking about Mr. Bing, I also want to take some time just to extend some gratitude to our outgoing acting superintendent, Dr. Gilbert. His leadership and dedication over the past few months has been exemplary. He shared in our March 22 meeting a saying from his pastor, "We're either on our way into a storm, going through a storm, or coming out of a storm," and he truly stepped up and stepped in during a storm. He guided our district through numerous challenges, ensuring that our schools continue to operate as smoothly as possible, and I look forward to him continuing his impact on our district in his role as Assistant Superintendent of Access and Equity. So I want to thank him for his unwavering commitment and service. And I think as we look to the future, we are confident that Mr. Bing will collaborate with the team he is joining, learning from their institutional knowledge and expertise, while also bringing a fresh perspective and dynamic leadership that I believe will further our mission and enhance our achievements. He comes to us with a really impressive background and deep leadership experience as a superintendent, working in a variety of capacities, sometimes responsible for a single district and at other times for multiple districts simultaneously. He has unique experience, such as being the Chief Academic Officer in Jersey City, which, as Dr. Telesper mentioned earlier, allowed him to demonstrate leadership across multiple important areas: 3K through 12 schools, curriculum and instruction, special services, career and technical education, and English language learners, which will be an immense asset here. And although his career has taken him across our state and into New York, Mr. Bing has that personal affinity for South Orange Maplewood, having grown up nearby, and not only has the experiences that dovetail with the needs of our schools, but familiarity and a genuine passion for our community and the complex and nuanced work that being here requires. His vision for education, commitment to collaboration and communication with stakeholders, dedication to equity, and passion for student success have been evident throughout his career and during the interview process. This makes him an ideal person for our next superintendent. I believe he will fit in naturally with the team, have the eye to select new leaders, and possesses the acumen and experience needed to guide our district to new heights. So it's my earnest hope that, as a community, we can welcome Mr. Bing with grace and warmth so that we can collectively move forward together. So as we welcome Mr. Bing, let's remember that our strength of our district lies in the collective efforts of each member of our community, our teachers, staff, students, and parents. Together, we can build on our successes and address our challenges with resilience and shared purpose. This period of transition is an opportunity for us to come together, support one another, and allow our superintendent time to acclimate. By fostering an environment of understanding and patience, we can set a positive tone and work collaboratively together towards shared goals, moving forward together. Thank you.
It's a tough act to follow. I just want to also extend my thank you to Dr. Gilbert. You know, he did graciously step into a role and, you know, situation in which it may not have been the most ideal for him into his foray into superintendency, and I personally have been able to get to know him even more in this capacity, and it takes a lot. It takes a lot. There's been a lot that has happened in this community over the past couple of months, and he has stepped up and showed strength and has had to make some really tough decisions. I do look forward to continuing to work with him just in his, I would say, his normal capacity as Assistant Superintendent of Access and Equity. And I just want to welcome Superintendent Bing here. You know, Liz captured a lot of, you know, kind of the thought process of what we went through, the interview process, his accolades. I am hopeful for this new opportunity and also would just like to say, you know, I hope that we, as a community, can welcome and kind of give some time to acclimate. As Liz mentioned, we have a lot, a lot going on. We've seen that in our previous meetings of all the initiatives. We're about to go into our district goals next month, and so I personally look forward to Superintendent Bing just diving right in and getting acclimated with us, with the community, with the teachers, with the Board, and, most importantly, with the students as well. Thank you.
I'm very happy that the Board has picked Mr. Jason Bing Chatelik to be the next Superintendent of South Orange Maplewood School District. The Board selected him after a very thorough interview process where we interviewed some very, very strong candidates. What impressed me the most about Mr. Bing is his dedication to being a lifetime educator. He started as a math teacher, and then he progressively got leadership positions as supervisor, then a superintendent, and then last as a superintendent of superintendents. I mean, that's very cool. I look forward to his leadership, and I've always believed that improvement needs stability. I hope that he brings stability to our school district. Welcome, Mr. Bing.
I too want to recognize Dr. Gilbert. Just a few days after he took over, I had parents calling me, "The buses are on time. We feel heard," and that's all parents wanted at that time. So I really want to recognize his work. I think he is going to be a superintendent somewhere else very soon. You know, I think everybody has talked about Mr. Bing's experience and why, you know, he's the man for the job, but, you know, his breadth of experience, the confidence he instilled in all of us throughout the interview process really showed that he was the person for this moment to take on the challenge of South Orange and Maplewood School District, which we know is momentous. So I look forward to seeing, you know, his work in action.
I too would be remiss to not first discuss the remarkable past few months we've had under the leadership of Dr. Gilbert. Dr. Gilbert was the superintendent that helped onboard me as a new Board member, and he did have to step into this position in a very difficult time. The difficulty when he stepped in, and he had no idea what was coming down the road. And this is just a man with such a remarkable presence. You know, he sort of leads our restorative practice as part of the district, and it's remarkable how that comes into what he does every single day. And in meetings, with parents, committee meetings, he's just, you know, he's a guy who walks the walk and sees every person, and he guided us through a remarkably trying time financially, culturally, and emotionally. And we are so lucky to have had him available for that role and lucky that he is remaining here and providing his tremendous skills still. You know, knowing that we were going to have the Superintendent's Search, when I started as a new Board member, I was fearful. You know, walking into this process, honestly, I said to myself, and probably to other people, "Are we going to actually find anyone decent who wants to come and work here?" Because this is an amazing place, but it also, you know, I mean, you can look at the news. We have our unique attributes. And then how are we possibly going to find consensus across all nine folks on the Board? And then we met Jason Bing, and when I tell you, you know, we can't disclose what happened inside this, inside the chamber making this decision, but I can tell you, there was strong consensus, and that was a remarkable thing. Because this is the thing. First of all, we had a remarkably strong pool of candidates. We had very, very, very difficult decisions that we had to make inside that room, and we would have been lucky with a number of the folks who stepped up and were prepared to take this job. We needed a leader who was able to steer us through what were likely to be some rough waters to come. We needed someone who has a high degree of operations knowledge and is experienced at actually executing on major plans and seeing things through, and has experience with diverse districts. And, you know, Mr. Bing's remarkable history leads us into that, right? He was a teacher. He was a curriculum supervisor. He was a director of curriculum and instruction. He was a director of special services. He was a superintendent of a small school district. He was a superintendent of a medium-sized school district. He was a chief academic officer for a massive school district. He's been a superintendent of a county-level educational agency. This guy has done it all. And he came here, and in talking to him, it was clear he understood who we were, and he knew the challenges that we faced, and he had some answers to give that were like, "Yeah, okay, let's make this happen." And so we are lucky to have gotten him and to make this hire, and I am very optimistic for the trajectory that our district will be led in under his leadership, and I'm thankful to get to be a part of it.
Yes, I agree with what my colleagues have already said. Thank you to Dr. Gilbert for his service during this time. He stepped up and really managed in a lot of new areas for himself professionally and did a commendable job, just trying to keep the ship steady in some often unsteady seas. I look forward to his continued commitment to our district as an integral part of our senior leadership team. And after going through this search, we are now putting forward Mr. Bing, who embodies the qualities that our community highlighted as crucial for this role. He brings deep institutional knowledge and operational knowledge, as others have already pointed out, and those should serve us well. It's also worth noting that Mr. Bing has ties to our community and values all that it has to offer. Lastly, thank you to my Board colleagues for engaging in this process collegially and collaboratively. I think our positive collective engagement so far sets a strong foundation for a smooth transition of leadership. So thank you to all of you, too.
I wasn't planning on saying anything, and I think everybody covered it all, but I quickly just jotted down some notes. So first, I do want to thank Dr. Gilbert for stepping up and being a person who, in a moment where it felt like there was a lot of instability, his presence and his ability to be so open, transparent, and communicative with district families, with students, with folks internally, it really meant a lot, and I just want him to know that we appreciate him very, very much. So very quickly, the thing that impressed me the most about Superintendent Bing is, you know, right off the bat, he has a vision, teaching and learning, and our teachers are at the forefront of that vision. And I wrote down in my notes, as I was looking it over this morning, you know, one of the things that he said to all of us that really resonated with me is this idea of democratizing decision-making and allowing our teachers to have a voice in setting the priorities, and I think that's so important. He kept highlighting, you know, "You've got to be in the classroom to see what's really happening and how we can meet the needs of every student." And I'm excited because I think that he brings a lot of best practices to bear, so we can all look forward to seeing what those best practices are. So welcome, Superintendent Bing. We're really excited to have you.
Board member Callahan?
Yes.
Board member Eckert?
Yes.
Board member Gifford?
Yes.
Board member Meyer?
Yes.
Board member Sackett Gabel?
Yes.
Board president Telesford?
Yes.
Board member Vat Lamani?
Yes.
Board member Whit Letter?
Yes.
Motion passes. We have a hand carry for tonight as well. This is Board Resolution 4625 to appoint the incoming superintendent as supervisor of special services to assist with Mr. Bing's transition to the role of superintendent of schools for the school district of South Orange and Maplewood. Is there a motion?
Yes, motion to move forward?
Second.
Second.
Discussion on the motion.
Board Member Meyer?
So the public is clear, and maybe so I'm clear. I think we, I know it's our desire to make sure that Mr. Bing can come in and begin working alongside the staff as soon as possible. And while it may not have been our intention to specifically have him work for 10 days as supervisor of special services, that is an FTE that is open that he can fit into to facilitate having him on the books and doing that work prior to actually starting legally once the position is open on July 1. Is that accurate?
Yes, for the most part. In order to facilitate this, we had discussions with the county superintendent. Obviously, one of the issues is that we still have under contract a superintendent and an acting superintendent. And so to facilitate this in a formal way, this was the most appropriate way to, to do it.
And I'll just note that in general, you know, it is really concerning that we do not have an actual person in that supervisor of special services role. And I'm hoping that we get that filled as soon as possible. But it is fortuitous that that's filling this current function.
And, and just to add, I mean, this is only for 10 days. So this starts on the 20th of June, and this position ends on the 30th of June. And starting July 1, Mr. Bing will be our superintendent.
All right. Board Member Callahan?
Yes.
Board Member Eckert?
Yes.
Board Member Gifford?
Yes.
Board Member Meyer?
Yes.
Board Member Saka Gabel?
Yes.
Board President Tellezberg?
Yes.
Board Member Vod Lomani?
Yes.
Board Member Whitlitter?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Now we have our second hearing of individuals and delegations.
Hello. Rosio Lopez, president of Somaya. I actually want to welcome you to South Orange and Maplewood School District. As you can see, Somaya is, you know, most of the people except ASCA that you have over here, the administrators. I'm the president. Shira Lincoln is here, our vice president. I wanted to introduce ourselves. That was part of the reason we came here today to meet you. And I'm glad to hear that you want to listen to the staff, the educators, that actually are the ones doing the job in order to take decisions. We have been left behind for a while, so we're very happy to hear something like that. So welcome. We are like a family, a dysfunctional family, but we still are a family, okay? And hopefully you have a great time here and we can, you know, have a great relationship. If we have a great relationship, our district grows and improves. And we all want to have a district that works well, that, you know, we interact with each other, and we are happy to come in every day. I want to introduce you, the ASCA president and vice president as well, Ling Yerby and Melissa Butler. They're not in our union, this different one, but we get along pretty well. And then for you, I still have a lot of time. No, I have two minutes. But again, welcome. And now for you, I want to get serious because what I saw today touched me personally. I don't know how this algorithm works, but I don't know if they look if they're single moms. And sometimes when you're a single mom with two kids of that age, maybe you went through a divorce, especially when you have to live close to a school and try to figure it out, how to survive. And I also know where is having a child that had to go to a different school and then lost his friends because he had to go back to the school that he was supposed to. And I know how that impacted my son. So none of you said anything, and I know it's not your decision. It might be yours, but please, give these kids the right school. Help them, mom. It's hard to be a woman, you know, a single mom in a district like this. And having to drive your kids when you have to go to work to the other side of town. Please help her. I mean, again, this algorithm has to also look about the human part. And I, I keep repeating this sentence, "We have to be more human. We're trying to do these big things, but we have to look at the little, little details." People are still people, and we can't forget about that. And the damage that we can do to one of those kids could be forever. Imagine your kids losing their friends all this time, and going to a school when they don't know anyone in middle school. Just think about your own children. How do you think they will feel? And if I heard right, she's a lawyer, and seeing a lawyer losing like her compassion here in front of all of us is for a reason. She was really hurt. So I ask you, I don't know if, if anything, but I ask you personally to please help her. If not, maybe I'll have to speak up in other places. Who knows? But this lady, you know, she deserves it, and her kids too. Thank you.
Next, we have Nicole Josie.
Okay, okay, sorry. My name is Nicole Josie. I don't usually get a chance to come out to these things. I am also the co-president of President's Council. I have been an advocate for special education, a PTA president. I have been a big advocate of our school district for many, many years. And right now, I am highly disappointed in our district and what we're doing with special education. Last week, when I heard about the resignation of Ms. Bedine, I just lost it. We have no supervisor. We now don't have assistant superintendent. I have two kids with IEPs in the district. My son is autistic. He's in the self-contained classes. He is in Clinton with the ABA program. And I have to tell you that you have the most amazing special education department in that school, but they are not being provided with the resources to do their job. We have now had to make the toughest decision to go out of district because his teacher and his case manager said, "We cannot teach him. We don't have what we need to bring it out of him." And for someone like me who was deeply rooted in this community, who believes so much in this community, my husband grew up in this community, went through all the schools. We have had our home in South Orange for over 40 years. And knowing that I now have to take my son out of a community that I have loved so much and put him on a bus and send him 30 minutes away just so he can get the education that he deserves is heartbreaking for me. I don't know what we do to fix this. But our special education department is failing every day, these kids. And we talk so much about inclusion in this community. Everything's about diversity and inclusion. And that doesn't just go down to race. It's not just race. It's not just sexuality. It's also kids and parents and adults with special needs. They need to feel included in this community. And right now, they don't. My son has to be separated, and I am losing my connection with the community. It's making me feel a little bit apprehensive about coming out and being a part of this because I feel like we are not wanted at this point. So whatever you do, I hope that you guys really look for strengthening this department. Special education really needs to be a focus. And I came here because I really wanted to meet the new superintendent, and I hope he understands how important this is. General education is just as important, but they both have to work together. We have to support general education and special education. We cannot keep failing our kids. We cannot keep failing our special education families. Thank you.
Now we move on to any new business? Anyone have any new business? All right. So the Board of Education will meet in public session on Thursday. You pass that? All right. The Board of Education will meet in public session on Thursday, June 6, 2024, at 6:30 PM in the district meeting room at 525 Academy Street in Maplewood, New Jersey, in person and utilizing an online video conference platform to honor retirees and celebrate staff accomplishments. Action will be taken. The Board of Education will meet in public session on Thursday, June 27, 2024, at 6:30 PM in the district meeting room at 525 Academy Street in Maplewood, New Jersey. Immediately following the opening of public session, the board will move to go into a closed session in the superintendent's office at 525 Academy Street in Maplewood, New Jersey, as well as using an online video conference platform to discuss personal matters with attorney-client privilege, legal negotiations, and other matters that may arise and require discussion, to be announced at a later date. Immediately following the closed session, the Board of Education will meet in public session estimated to be at 7:30 PM in the district meeting room at 525 Academy Street in Maplewood, New Jersey, in person, utilizing an online video conference platform, which will include hearing of individuals. The community can view the meeting by following the steps which will be listed on the agenda. If there are members of the community who would like to attend the meeting in person, please note that masks and social distancing are optional in accordance with the guidance received from the local DOH and CDC. Action will be taken. All right, that will make a motion to close our meeting. Thank you, Board Member Callahan. All in favor? All right, we are adjourned.